Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting, joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. And with that, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rivers.
Here.
Councilmember Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Thank you for that. And would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And the meeting minutes that we have for this evening are from the regular meeting of March 28th. Are there any questions, comments about this? Okay, then I will open this up for public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on the minutes of March 28th? Not seeing anybody raise their hand or run to the podium. Could we see if anyone on our Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. And I would be looking for a motion for the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion in second. All in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously unanimously. So we will move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens will be afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda will also include a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreational programs for all ages, and maintenance of our streets, parks, and buildings. See details on the web at katatricity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from iOS or Android App Store, or by texting your zip code, which is 94931, to 888-777. Next, the city has a vacancy on the Sonoma County Library Commission. See details on how to apply under the latest news at katatricity.org. Next, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@katatricity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Nixle. So with that, we can move on to the next item, which is approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
Okay. Then, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on approval of the final agenda? Not seeing anyone run up. Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. And I will bring it back. And we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, anybody wishing to speak on citizens' business? Everyone's quiet tonight. And our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, so the, we have before us the consent calendar, which has rescinding proclamation of the COVID-19 local emergency, city council team building final report, award construction contract for the Civic Center painting project, and the 2022 general plan implementation and annual progress report. Would you like any of those items pulled? Yes?
I'd like to pull C, please.
C, okay. Then, any other items? No? Okay, then I would be looking for a motion for items A, B, and D. I'll make a motion to move forward those items.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor. Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So items A, and what did I say? A, B, and D move forward unanimously. Then may we have a staff report on item C?
Actually, before we start on that, is there a, do you want a staff report, Councilmember Rivers, or is there a specific question that you wanted to ask?
Yeah, actually, it's actually not necessarily about this specific thing, but just in general, I've been getting a lot of feedback from people about transparency, about what the bid process is, and would just be interested to learn more about that at some point in the future. Doesn't necessarily have to be right now. But, you know, who's considered how, what are the criteria that are involved in selection, that type of details?
Sure, yeah, we can, I mean, I can give you a lot more information on that, but it's basically a public bidding process. It's advertised in the, in the newspaper, on our website, and anyone has the opportunity to bid. And it's also with the building exchange, I think, as well, the builders' exchange, where contractors go to look for bids.
Right, but it's not just about who bids, but rather how they're selected by the city of Katati, not, is that the same thing?
I, yeah, I know what you mean. Public, public contract code controls most of that, but we can, I, we can put together a conversation.
Okay.
Talk about it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Then, since we pulled it, I can open this up again for comment on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone. Kevin?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on item 8C, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. Then, I would be looking for a motion on this item. There's no more discussion?
I'm happy to move to award the construction contract for the Civic Center painting project.
Second. If a motion is second, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none. No abstentions. Then this item also passes unanimously. So now we will move on to item nine, direction on future agenda items. Anybody wishing in future? Okay, all right. Then we will move on to item 10. We are down to our regular agenda, and the first, the first item is... Sure.
So the, the request for getting those details about selection, should that be an agenda item?
If, if it's something of general interest to the whole council, we can make it an agenda item. Otherwise, I could just connect with you and fill you in on the background and details.
I'm interested in learning more about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me get agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
And I'm sorry, I did forget. I have an agenda item. I need to have a conversation with you about the mayor's monarch pledge. They extended the date till the end of April. So if we can talk offline about it and possibly put it on the agenda at the next meeting, it shouldn't, shouldn't take long. Okay?
Thank you. All right, great. So we will move on to item 10A, which is Sonoma County Police Officer of the Year item. And may we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to present our officer of the year, and not only our Katati Officer of the Year, but the Sonoma County's Officer of the Year. And so how we got here is, the way this works, there's the Sonoma County Law Enforcement Chiefs Association, and I'm a member of that. All the chiefs in our county are, the sheriff, DA, federal agencies, and we're allowed to nominate somebody to be the officer of the year. So only one person gets this every year. And so when you have a nominee, then the president of our association, who's right now the Santa Rosa chief, they have a committee, they appoint a committee, and then they review all the submittals. And so I submitted our officer for something that I presented before. As council knows, he was the excellence employee for 2022 as well, for our city, for what he's, for what he did. And the, the chiefs on the committee, they really latched onto this and unanimously voted Ryan Rinke, our officer as Sonoma County Officer of the Year. So this is what hap, this is how he got there. So just a little background on him, first of all, he's been a Katati police officer for about six years. He's our motor officer. So yes, he's the one that writes you tickets. When he's not writing tickets, he's also a field training officer here at Katati. So we all know how much snow there's been this year. In Northern California, this started earlier, all this snow. So on November 7th, we got a report to our police dispatch here in Katati, and a mom reported her daughter Camille missing. Camille worked in our city, and she was overdue travel. She was supposed to be in Salem, Oregon, and she was overdue to arrive there. So obviously, the mom's concerned, calls our dispatch center, tells our dispatchers, hey, I've checked with the higher, California Highway Patrol and Oregon State Police, seeing if they've ran across her. They have not. I'm concerned. The last place we know she was at was working in the city of Katati out of business. And so Ryan ended up with this missing person report, this case. So the normal thing to do is, we, law enforcement, we put you in a missing person system with your name and description and date of birth and all that. We knew that she had a Subaru car, so that license plate and that car information was also loaded up into the system so that any police officer in California or Oregon, if they ran across Camille or her car, would call us. And so we could find her. So that's the norm. But Ryan knew something was up, and he went way beyond that. So what he, we discovered was that she, talking to the families, she sometimes go to, goes to Eureka on her way up to Salem, Oregon, and then takes backroads through Humboldt and Siskiyou County to go to Salem. So we knew that, or Ryan knew that. He knew that, he discovered that she used her credit card in the city of Eureka. With help of dispatchers, he pinged her cell phone. So in other words, got with cellphone companies, discovered that her phone was pinged in rural Humboldt County. The closest law enforcement agency he could find where the ping was, was tribal police. And they said, do you, you know how much it's snowing right now up here? You want us to look for the Subaru? They're like, it's, it's like extreme snow. He talked to Humboldt deputies. They told him the same thing. You know how much snow there is for us to find his car? CHP, same thing. He, he got ahold of Subaru. They have this OnStar Link satellite apparatus on the cars. He tried that. Unfortunately, it, it had timed out, so that had expired, and it wasn't renewed. So that struck out. He looked at Google Earth because the family kept saying that she may take Highway 199, which I've never even heard of Highway 199, but it's in Siskiyou County, Siskiyou County. And so he's on Google Earth, looking at this 199. There's this river that runs along the windy 199. He thinks the worst. He thinks maybe she went off in the river because of all the snow. He talks to Humboldt deputies. They're like, you know how much snow there is? He finally talks to some Siskiyou County deputies. And he says, hey, I want, I need a deputy to check 199 from this section to this section of the, the road. And he's talking to the cops up there, and they're like, yeah, there's, there's four of us on duty for the whole county tonight. It's snowing. We're on a search and rescue on the other side of the county, like a search and rescue event as we speak. Ryan keeps making phone calls. I don't know if you know what a resident deputy is, but that's a deputy, that's a rural deputy sheriff that works for their home and they're subject to call out. He calls this rural resident deputy in Siskiyou County. The deputy says, yeah, we, I, we're, we're overwhelmed. It's blizzard, and we're on a search and rescue. He says, I know a civilian, though, that has a snowmobile. I can go ask him. And so he does. The civilian agrees. I've talked to the mom, by the way. That's why I know a lot beyond the police report. So the civilian on the snowmobile, he, he's going down this 199, looking in the river, looking at the road, looking for this Subaru. He's about to give up because it's too dangerous for him. It's so bad on the snowmobile even. He's like, he's like, I'm gonna go around. Just one more corner. He went around that last corner, and that Subaru was there. So Camille was stuck in the snow, out of gas, so no heater in the car, no OnStar, cellphone dead. And because she was traveling, she had a lot of clothes. She had put on all of her clothes that were in the car, and she, because she was freezing, and she was writing a journal. She was literally writing her goodbyes. And then the deputy took her to a safe place so that she could call family. So that's why he's the guy. So I would like to have Ryan, and I would like to have this gentleman here come up from Exchange Club. And the Exchange Club is going to present Ryan with his Exchange Club Award, which is Officer of the Year for Sonoma County. This is Ray Carlson.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to present this outstanding officer with this recognition for 2022. And it's an honor for our club to be able to do this. This is our 75th year honoring one officer a year in Sonoma County. Let's see which way to start here first. First, I'd like to bring my, our president up, Mike Spicgood, and he has the plaque for Ryan here. And where's the cameras? How, just do it this way? Okay, okay. Backside, backside?
I'd like to present you with this plaque from the Exchange Club, the Santa resident, in honor of your service.
Well, just a couple of words about the Exchange Club, so you probably never heard of us and know what we do, but we're a national service club. Our focus is prevention of child abuse, community service, Americanism, and youth. And one of the programs that we've been doing in our last three years, four years, is honoring veterans with Reis Across America at the Franklin Cemetery. And so last year, we honored 2,200 with place and Reis at their gravestone in there. We take some percentage of that money and put it back in the community for veterans and youth. So the veterans that have served and have passed on are still giving to our community through this program. This one outstanding one. But a few other things that we've done over the years, and one of them, like this is 75 years, as I said, with this. Okay, now back to honor Ryan. He's the important one here tonight. So I got a certificate of recognition from, which one is this one here? Senator Maguire. Boy, he's got a signature that you can't figure out here. And you got this slide, and I wouldn't need to think about this. Senator Maguire. And that's for you. He is also going to get you a resolution. That'll come off the floor for that. He didn't have it in the time to make this tonight. So, okay. One more, don't walk away. You gotta contain all of it wherever, Ryan, somewhere. So a certificate of recognition from Assembly, from Damon Conley. And you can read all that in there. So, but it's a nice, nice presentation there. Now, this is rare. I don't know, in the years that I've been doing this, and Chris Smith, what has that been, about 20 years or more? I don't think I've ever gotten a certificate of special recognition from Congress, from Congress. The House of Representatives, your Jared Hoffman did this for you. Very well done. Thank you. I adore you. Now, you can, you can, if you want to say a few words, yours, but I want to come back in a minute. So, okay.
All right. Okay. I am honored and humbled to stand here before you tonight as the Sonoma County Police Officer of the Year. As a member of the Katati Police Department, I'm incredibly proud to serve the community, our community, and to have the opportunity to work alongside so many dedicated and talented law enforcement professionals. This award is not just a recognition of my individual efforts, but a testament to the hard work and dedication of every law enforcement officer in Sonoma County. It is a reflection of the tireless efforts of our department and our partners who work day and night to keep our communities safe. As an officer, I know that every day brings new challenges and new opportunities to make positive impact in the lives of the people we serve. Whether responding to emergencies, conducting investigations, or being, simply being a visible and approachable presence in our communities, we are all committed to upholding the highest standards of professionalism and integrity. I want to thank my colleagues, my friends, my family, for their unwavering support, which has been the bedrock of my success as a police officer. I also want to express my gratitude to the Sonoma County law enforcement community for their commitment to excellence and for recognizing the hard work of the Katati Police Department. In closing, I would like to reiterate my heartfelt thanks. And for this honor, I'm proud to be a part of this amazing community, and I am committed to continuing my service to the people of Sonoma County with the same level of dedication and passion that has brought me here tonight. Thank you.
And now we have a distinguished member in the audience out there that has a resolution from the County Board of Supervisors, Neighbor Rabbit, Supervisor Rabbit.
Well, thank you. And it's, it's an honor to be here. Thank you all for your service. And Ryan, thank you for your service. I also know that you're a Marine, so we very much appreciate that. Appreciate the Exchange Club for all those years. And Chris Smith behind there, who I think has been there every 20 years, or for the last 20 years on recognizing law enforcement. Law enforcement, obviously, has been a very difficult profession for the last so many years. But even this week, and we saw the tragedy in Louisville, the importance of law enforcement and the bravery and the integrity of those that protect us. So certainly our hearts are with, with Officer Whitkey in Louisville. But here, just what an amazing story. When you broke down the details and you realized this, and I made a gesture to Chris about, I want to get the movie rights on this one. This is just an amazing story. But I think it really goes to the officer's integrity, the tenacity and just staying after something and really, until you solve that issue, knowing that there's a family in distress, someone out there that's lost in that, at that moment. Just so impressive. And just goes to the, to the person that you see here. So very well-deserved accolade, well-deserved recognition. And the county did pass a resolution as well honoring Ryan. Now, we didn't frame ours like the federal government does, because we can't print the money. But a little more wobbling for the office at home. So Ryan, thank you so much for all your service. Thank you for the years to come. And also, Ryan was with Sonoma County briefly. So Sonoma's losses, Katati's could gain. But Ryan, thank you so much.
Unless Chief wants you up here. You want him up here when this next one? Huh? No, it's your honor this time.
It's all yours, right?
Yeah, it's your honor this time. Okay. So next up, we have a perpetual plaque. This, this plaque that is, we're bringing in tonight has from 1960 to current, honorees' names on there. This is to be displayed at the chief's office here, or someplace that he would like to have it seen. And so, Chris Smith, will you present that?
This is the perpetual plaque, and I note that the Katati Police Department, officers with the Katati Police Department earned this honor and brought this home in 1980, or 1981, in 1987. I'm not sure how old our officer was.
I was just born in 1987.
1987. So this is a big deal. This whole thing is a big deal. And the city of Katati can display this proudly for the next year. And I'm just also very, very proud that I'd, to be a part of this. You know, I've known a lot of people in, in law enforcement over my life, and my... life, and my impression is that all of them went into it because they love their community, they want to help people, they want to defend people. And I know that there are a lot of people in the country now who don't believe that that's why people go into law enforcement. And I hope that that will come back around. But what this officer did, he exercised his opportunity to save a life, and it was truly profound. So congratulations and enjoy this for the next year.
They're not following our script. We'll do more pictures. We'll do more with the council.
I want to thank you for allowing us to come in this evening and do this presentation. Through COVID and all the tough, we have got very creative in how we continually honor every year through COVID an officer every year. So, and this one, I think, is better than in COVID for us than the last two that we had, because they were in rooms someplace that nobody knew where we were to speak of. Because one of them was undercover officer. So, so anyway, but it worked out. And it's a great program that we do, and we, we really appreciate law enforcement, and we want to keep honoring them, and that's what it's about. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. So now I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak from the public? Not seeing anybody run to the podium. Then can we check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay. Counsel, we also, we have a resolution that is in your packet. And I'm opening up for comments from all of you, any comments you have. And then I would be looking for a motion, and then I could read this resolution if we pass this.
So, hi, I'm Kay Rivers, and I just want to say, I have three kids. My middle child is a Marine right now. And I just want to say thank you. And reading the story about Camille makes me think of my daughter. And I'm just super grateful that, like, Dog with a Bone, you did not put it down. And that person in Siskiyou County who went out on the snowmobile, like, it's a beautiful story. And just really thank you.
Officer Ranky, I just want to thank you. I feel like we have our own Lieutenant Joe Kenda here. I just want to thank you for, I'm proud of your service and your action. And I want to thank you for your resourcefulness, your persistence in finding this missing person, Camille. And, you know, you make Kattati proud. I also have family in law enforcement, including my daughter, who just started her law enforcement career. So I just, I know the work that goes into it. I'm just so grateful for your determination and, and your service. So thank you today.
I'll just briefly echo those sentiments and thank you, Officer Ranky, for honoring Kattati with your excellent work. And it's great to see Kattati back on that perpetual plaque.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, Officer Ranky. And I really appreciated your comments about law enforcement officers throughout the county who are working hard every day. I'm sure that there are countless officers who are wrestling with their own problems that they're trying to solve and just not putting down and just chipping away at and trying to help people who, who maybe go unnoticed. And I just want to say, I see that and recognize how, the great work that's going on throughout the county. So thank you very much for being such a great example of that.
And lastly, I agree with my colleagues. As a mother of three children, I just can't even imagine what it would, would feel like and that sense of hopelessness. But Officer Ranky, you didn't give up. You just kept pursuing. When you, when you got hit with an obstacle, you pulled back and took another avenue. And that persistence is really something really incredible. And it does, as was pointed out, that really shows your integrity and willingness to go above and beyond to make sure that our community members are safe. So I'm proud that you are one of our police officers. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And I look forward to working with you more in the future. Thank you for that. And so next, I would be looking if everyone is okay with the...
Yes, I'll make the motion to move the resolution recognizing Officer Ranky and the Kattati Police Department for outstanding service to the community.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And before we, we let you go, then, we're gonna, I'll read this, and then we'll, we'll take a little cookie and water break in honor of Officer Ranky. But, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Kattati Recognizing Officer Ranky and the Kattati Police Department for Outstanding Service to the Community. Whereas on November 7, 2022, Camille Markovich was reported missing by family members. Whereas the family called the Highway Patrol and Oregon State Police inquiring if either agency had contacted Camille during their patrols and was directed to the Kattati Police Department as she was last seen leaving work in Kattati. And whereas Officer Ranky was on duty and was dispatched, was dispatched to the call, and whereas Officer Ranky discovered that Camille had last used her credit card in Eureka and worked with Kattati Police Dispatchers Montoya and McGoon to arrange a location ping on Camille's cell phone, entering her in the missing person databases for both California and Oregon, creating a missing persons flyer to be distributed and sent beyond the lookout for Camille on multiple Oregon and California law enforcement agencies. And whereas the cellular phone last ping was from a tower located in rural Humboldt County and was no longer pinging any cellular towers indicating likely, a likely dead battery. And whereas Humboldt County Sheriff deputies and California Highway Patrol officers informed Officer Ranky that a severe snowstorm was occurring in Northern California. And whereas speaking with Camille's family members, Officer Ranky discovered that she was possibly taking rural roads connecting to Highway 199 on her way to Oregon, which would take her through Siskiyou County. And whereas Officer Ranky worked with Siskiyou County Sheriff's Department to search for Camille, and Sergeant Wardell continued to maintain communications during the night shift. Whereas Siskiyou deputies improvised by having a civilian with a snowmobile check the rural road that Camille was believed to be traveling, and ultimately located her far up the rural road with her car stuck in the snow and her cellular phone battery dead. And whereas the car was out of gas and the heater was inoperable, so despite wearing every article of clothing that she had with her, it was becoming dangerously cold in the car. And whereas, thanks to the diligent work of Officer Ranky and other assisting officers and dispatchers, Camille was transported to a safe location and survived the ordeal. Whereas for his outstanding service, Officer Ranky was awarded the 2022 Excellence Award, which is awarded by staff to one person who shows exceptional commitment and going above and beyond in service to the community. And whereas Officer Ranky also was selected by the Sonoma County Law Enforcement Chiefs Association as a recipient of the Exchange Club Officer of the Year Award from among all law enforcement agencies in Sonoma County. And whereas, the action of adopting this resolution of appreciation does not constitute a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act, Guideline Section 15378. Therefore, no further environmental review is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Kattati does hereby find that the actions of Officer Ranky and the Kattati Police Department saved Camille Markovich's life by quickly and diligently pursuing the case and locating her before it was too late. And be it further resolved that the City Council extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Officer Ranky and the Kattati Police Department for their outstanding work every day as highlighted by saving Camille Markovich. It is hereby certified that the foregoing resolution was adopted at the regular council meeting of the City Council of the City of Kattati on this April 11, 2023. So with that, congratulations. And let's have some cookies and whatever pictures people want. And let's have some cookies and whatever pictures people want. Already. Well, welcome back. Fun times. So our next item is appointment of planning commission members. So are you going to give us a staff report?
Sure, yeah, I'll give you a brief staff report. So the item before you right now is appointment of planning commission members. We have two vacancies and the vacant positions were advertised on the city's social media, downtown Marquee, and on the city's website, and applications were received up to and on March 30, 2023, which was the deadline. The city received a total of three applications for planning commission. And the two vacant seats are Mayor Harvey's and Councilmember Ford's. And you can see in the, the council has in the packet before them that the nominees are Kimberlin Moffett for Mayor Harvey and Ryan Long for Councilmember Ford. And the council can ratify Mayor Harvey's and Councilmember Ford's nominations by by a majority adoption, by motion, majority motion, adoption. Sorry.
Got it, it's all right.
The English seems muddled there, but I think you understand, yeah. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, questions? Any questions? I'll open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item may jump forward. You may certainly speak.
Mayor Harvey, councilmembers of Katari. I just want to say what a priv- apparently the word is contagious. I want to say what a privilege it is to live in Katari and to raise my family here. I have two boys and we've been here since 2019 and it is just an absolute pleasure. I'm very excited for this opportunity to become a part of the planning commission and to really play my part in the community. Community is something that's very important to me and I believe that everyone should play their role in it and be kind of a member of said community. I'm just going to blame Damian for my lack of eloquence here. But, you know, I think it's important to look at everything also with that overarching sense of community, but also of social justice, of environmental justice, and of respect for all of the population that lives here. So thank you.
Thank you, Kimberlin.
Thank you, everyone, tonight. I wasn't actually sure if I was supposed to speak before or after, but no, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Ford for the nomination and for the opportunity to to serve the community. My wife and I just moved here with our daughter and so I'm excited to be involved and help contribute here and work with all of our colleagues and stakeholders to continue to to make Katari a great place to live. Certainly difficult following Officer Renkey's act, but but yeah, it was amazing hearing his story and it was, you know, you sleep a little safer at night knowing that we have such great officers on the force here and so thanks again for your consideration.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Is this open mic?
It's on the nominations for the planning commission? That's okay. Anyone on Zoom would like to speak on the nominations?
We have lost our Zoom attendees, so Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
All righty, well, Kimberlin didn't say that she she currently serves on the Measure Us Committee and has done that. I'm glad to see her moving forward and getting even more involved. And had a wonderful conversation with Ryan and we're glad to have you in the community and wish you both luck if we ratify this. So I would be, if anyone would like to put forward a motion or any comments?
I just want to say briefly, as usual, Mayor Harvey was quicker acting than I was. And so, so she selected Kimberlin Moffett first, so that left me two great applications to choose from and I, it was a difficult decision. I just want to say, so Ryan has a very valuable experience from the applicant side of the planning process that I think will come in really useful on the planning commission. And while he's fairly new to Katari, he's got a long Sonoma County track record. So I'm excited to have him join and I personally find that a relatively newer voice to town is important to have on the planning commission as well. So I'm excited to have both of these members joining. So I would move that we approve both nominations.
Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Well, with that, congratulations, Ryan and Kimberlin, and welcome to the planning commission. I'm sure that you will be hearing from Damian and Noah. And we will have a full planning commission. Sorry, we won't have another Cookie Fest. Sorry about that. Hopefully you got your cookies. The last hit with Officer Renkey's thing. God, I can't talk either. What, it must be this room tonight. So next, we will move on to to the next item, which is parklets and outdoor dining program presentation and adoption of resolution establishing a public parklet space rental fee. And will we have a staff report on this, you think? Thank you, Mayor Harvey and members of the council. Good evening. I'm going to go right to my next slide. Okay, I'm going to be presenting the new parklets and outdoor dining program to you this evening and we're also asking for your consideration of a resolution to establish the public parklet space rental fee. We'll go more into what that is in a few moments. So, well, familiar with parklets at this point. Parklets are basically referred to the use of parking spaces for some other type of use besides parking and frequently that is outdoor dining. And the city established temporary parklets during COVID to assist businesses through that time when indoor dining was really not feasible. We purchased the large tents, which have recently gone away, but to provide shelter for those parklet areas during the inclement weather months. And those were up for a couple of years. So they, and as COVID began to ease and indoor dining became more feasible again, the city council determined that the temporary parklets had run their course and asked staff to develop a permanent parklet program and that the tents should be removed. And they were indeed removed just yesterday. And so you'll see that there's a whole different look out there, especially on Old Redwood Highway. The one exception is that there is still a tent in the parking lot in front of the flagship taproom. It's a special circumstance, they've been granted an extension until July 1. It is their plan to apply for a permanent parklet there in their parking area. Right now, their situation is fairly dire. They don't have electricity in their building and it's been that way for quite some time. And so they are really reliant on the tent to provide that outdoor dining space so that they can actually continue operations. And so we've been in close communications with them and the city manager granted them an extension through July 1 and we're hoping to, that they'll get some good news about their electricity situation very soon. I want to note that the picture that you see in the presentation here is the parklet the flagship taproom has installed in Windsor. So you can see a little bit of, that's kind of what they have in mind for their permanent parklet. Obviously, this one is in public, public parking space on the Windsor Town Green, but you know, they'd be looking at a private parking, parklet installation here. But that was a reasonably attractive and nice looking example, so I wanted to show that to you and they would be interested in doing something with sort of a similar design and that does fit what we have in mind for the permanent program. Okay, so in the development of our program for the semi-permanent parklets, we wanted to find out what the reaction has been to parklets in Katari so far. And so we conducted some business, business input meetings in December of last year. What we heard was that the parklets provided a really critical support to the businesses during COVID and that the patrons were very appreciative of the indoor, I'm sorry, the outdoor dining option. Even when indoor became more available, they really, patrons gravitate towards the outdoor dining. And some of the businesses are interested in exploring permanent parklets under this new program. Some of the concerns that we heard were that the parklets that we had were not visually appealing, that they were blocking the view of other businesses and that obviously on-street parking was reduced by the parklets that we had. We also conducted an online community survey in November, December of last year and we had two, almost 200 responses, which for our, our surveying recently, that's really a great response rate. And what, what we heard is that the community members are generally supportive of the parklet's concept, don't like the tents so much. And I think that, you know, we're all kind of agreed about the tents and the need for something different going forward. Community members really prefer outdoor dining when they have an option, especially, you know, as the weather's improving, that'll be popular. The concerns included the appearance of the tents and reduced on-street parking. So we have developed a program and our, our goal is simple and streamlined. We want to reduce the hoops that businesses may need to go through and the amount of review that is taken up in staff time, especially in looking at some of the other communities that have parklets programs. Some of them are quite extensive as far as the regulations and the paperwork. And so our goal is simple. Really, our program addresses four different scenarios. This includes two different types of parklets, basically public parking parklets and parklets on private property and private parking lots. We also reach beyond parklets to draw outdoor dining into this program as well because so many of the constituents are very similar. So we're looking at basically outdoor dining that would be sidewalk dining on public property as well as standards for private property, outdoor dining. We're, we're trying to keep the process simple and as much as possible at the staff level, the community development department will be managing the program, doing the intake, doing pre-application meetings with interested businesses, managing the review by other departments, including Public Works, Police and Fire, providing the approval at the staff level. The one exception is that if an outdoor dining installation is proposed adjacent to residential, a minor use permit is required. So that's the next level up of, of review and that's what's required in our zoning code currently. Much of the outdoor dining, especially when we come to parklets, would require a building permit. We do have the option of waiving that requirement and that'll be up to the community development director. The, any parklet or outdoor dining that's on public property also requires a license agreement and we are proposing that there be a rental fee in addition for parklets on public property. Again, more on that in a moment. So in, in trying to be responsive to what we heard from businesses in the community and looking at other communities' parklets programs, and this is a, a really abbreviated version of the standard, you'll see in the staff reports, there's quite a lot more detail, but we're going for visually attractive, regular maintenance of the parklet area and the outdoor dining area being a very important component. We don't want the parklets to block traffic or bicycles or pedestrians. We don't want to block visual or physical access to other businesses or any of the public amenities nearby. Accessibility is also very important. All of these, these installations need to be ADA compliant. And also whatever gets installed needs to be able to be removed without any damage to the public infrastructure. The, the parklets and outdoor dining, if they're on public property, we, you know, we're requiring that they be right in front of the subject business. That's not necessarily the case if they're on private property, there's more flexibility. And importantly, we're proposing that when it comes to an on-street public parklet, that only two parking spaces can be occupied. If it's a private parking lot, then three. And, you know, we're, we believe that'll provide enough space for a decent parklet without taking up a whole bank of, of park, of parking, which was what was happening on Old Red. The rental fee that we're proposing, and that's what the subject of the resolution before you here, is $1 per square foot. So it's a fairly nominal fee. If you were looking at two parking spaces, that's approximately $324 a year. And that would be collected annually from the, the business with an on-street parking space. And again, that would be, or with a parklet that's on, on street. Again, that is just for public parklets, not for private parklets and not for outdoor dining. It's really just associated with the use of public parking spaces. And the idea is to partially recoup some of the cost of staff time of reviewing those applications and monitoring those parklets, but also for the use of public space. Okay, so the restaurants that had parklets have all been, we've been in communication with them and invited them to be part of this process, to submit applications. As soon as we are done finalizing the program, which would be if its resolution is approved tonight, then we'll be ready to do general outreach and we'll see if we get some, some takers and hopefully we will. We do have, besides flagship taproom, we have heard from the twins over in the Oliver Shopping Center, they had a parklet, their tent was their own and it blew away prematurely in some of the storms. But they, the owner there has been talking with me about her interest in a parklet. And we've also heard from Cafe Salsa, they, of course, they already have their outdoor dining, they had a tent, it's been removed, but they're interested in some more permanent cover that they might be able to install there. So with that, we recommend that the city council adopt a resolution establishing the public parklet space rental fee. And I can answer any questions you might have about the program, the fee.
Thank you very much. I have two questions. My first question is about the two, two parking spot limit. I know a lot of our street parking is slanted at an angle, so I was kind of looking at Google Maps, trying to envision how you could have reasonably shaped tables in two heavily slanted parking spots. So I'm just kind of looking for how that's going to work. And then my second question was, how is this new, the new ordinance going to affect existing outdoor dining throughout the city? Like, will every, is everyone grandfathered in that already has their, their setup going? Or what would that affect be? Thank you.
Yeah, so, so working backwards, yes. So in, in, I think, pre-COVID, a number of the, the outdoor dining setups that you see out there were, they were already there and they were, they're, they're granted under license agreement. With the private, private outdoor dining, same thing, except they went through a permit process and actually the requirements were changed that required a permit, a plant, is it a minor, minor use permit for all of those? Yeah, so like for, for instance, the outdoor dining in front of Super Burger, that's actually private, it's on their own property even though it's on the street front. They, they had to get a minor use permit for that outdoor dining, so they have a permit in place. So yes, essentially what we, what we have had, what's out there on the street now is on the sidewalk or on private property is on the sidewalk or on private property, is, it's allowed. And so this will be for everything going forward, essentially, yeah, what's there has been, is grandfathered in, although it's not, we, we wouldn't really consider it non-conforming either because it's all more or less consistent with what this program is setting forth. As far as the, the diagonal nature of the parking spaces, so, so that, that picture of the flagship taprooms, outdoor dining, I think they're occupying more than two parking spaces, but that actually is on a diagonal too. And you can't really tell from the picture so much, but it's going to require some creativity for sure and probably smaller tables in order to really utilize this, this space because there'll be these little, these little angles. So, you know, we, we will probably treat each application kind of as its own experiment, especially as this is a new program. So as we are hearing from businesses about their interest in a parklet and we're working with them to figure out how to meet the parameters and how to make it workable for them, you know, we'll be exploring the feasibility of that, that two parking spaces. And I think that, especially looking at Old Redwood Highway because of the parking on a diagonal, that's why we included outdoor dining on the sidewalks as well, because in some cases, parklets might not be as feasible as sidewalk dining. Trying to cover the bases.
I would just add, you know, it's kind of our attempt to balance because as much as we heard interest in outdoor dining and the ability for restaurants to use that, we heard equal amounts of interest in access to parking in those same locations. And so it's our attempt to try to balance those two concerns and also just given the, the nature of the storefronts on Old Redwood Highway and how they are occupied, it often is retail adjacent to restaurant, retail doesn't get any benefit from outdoor parklet space where a restaurant does. And we do have the option in the program for adjacent restaurants to team up and share their two spaces. So if two adjacent restaurants each wanted a two-space parklet, that could become a four-space parklet that's kind of co-mingled amongst the restaurants.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, two questions. First, adjacent to residential use includes up-down mixed use, for instance?
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, it's actually, it's spelled out in the, in the zoning code and so.
Yeah, so it's, the zoning code specifies outdoor dining or uses directly adjacent to residential, so a mixed-use land use is actually different than residential. I think someone living in a mixed-use development would anticipate a little bit more noise impacts or activity adjacent to them just by the nature of their, their home. And that requirement came out of the 2019 economic development efforts where we streamlined outdoor dining, but there were some concerns at that time over impacts from a downtown example, being directly adjacent to like single-family homes like we have in our downtown. And so we, the council at the time wanted to put some ability to address that potential impact, notify adjacent residents and allow them to participate in the decision-making.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. The more substantive question is, all we're being asked to approve is the fee. So does that mean kind of the whole rest of the program is already, doesn't require any ordinance changes or any, it doesn't require anything else to change that we would need to act on? Or will that come back later?
No, that's, that's accurate. Yeah. Yeah. The, the program, it's, it's essentially, it's an administrative level program. Yeah. So it's all within the confines of our existing zoning code and...
Even the ability to rent out public parking spaces for private use? That's consistent with our current...
That's, that's what the resolution is addressing.
I had a question about the fee. I know it's very nominal, but when you did a review of other cities, what were the ranges? I know we settled through 24 a year, which seems kind of low. So I'm kind of curious what the ranges of other cities were charging for public parking.
It's a much bigger range. It could be like thousands of dollars. And, you know, I think that the distinction is that first, some of those communities, they charge for parking. And so they had a very specific calculation that they could use, which was lost revenue, which is not a calculation that we can make since our parking is free of charge. So in the interests of a streamlined program that, that promotes outdoor dining as a way to enliven the streetscape and promote economic development, you know, we thought a dollar a square foot would be a good place to start. Okay?
Yeah. One of the main complaints that I heard about the parklets and, well, the previous ones or the tents was, you know, one, the parking, but the second one was the trash that seemed to accumulate around it. And I don't know if it was just more difficult for Public Works to get in there or if it was private land or whatever the reason was, but is that part of the maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. And so, follow-up, and I feel sad to ask this question, but I have also noticed we've had quite a few businesses go out of business. And so, you know, should, and I'm hoping that they all fill up and this is not going to be, this question's completely moot, but should that happen in the future, are there provisions in place for what happens, when that happens to the parklets that are there?
If the, if a parklet, the, if the business that operates a parklet goes out of business...
Yes. Like are they required to remove it or like what, what happens to it?
Yes. Yes. So one of the requirements will be of the, of the license agreement will be that the property, the public property be returned to the same condition that it was before the parklet was installed or better. Craig suggested or better. So, so, so that, yes, that will be a requirement for the licensee to return the property back just the way it was before.
Okay. And then my last question, i- if it's sold, can the license be transferred to the new business owner or does it start all over again?
I don't know. Is that, is that even?
Yeah. I mean, we've had, we've had examples, like one that comes to mind is, it's Jam's Joy Bungalow currently, but it was a prior business and they did that outdoor dining. It wasn't a parking space, but it was, it, it was partially on public right-of-way and partially on private property. And the business that built it, they sold it to a different business owner. And as part of that process, it, it was, it was a new license agreement, but it was essentially transferring that right to the new owner.
Okay. So they would need, so they would need to reapply or could they just, it would be transferred?
They, they had to apply as part of their opening the new business.
But it wouldn't have to be like torn down and rebuilt again? They could just, you could, you know, it'd be an administrative process rather than physical? Is that correct?
Yeah. I think in practice, you know, if you have a new business coming in that likes what's there, they're going to want to keep it.
Right.
And they'll just talk to us about it and assuming that there's no issues with it and that it's functioning, you know, functioning, functioning fine, there's no issues in the public right-of-way.
Okay.
Then it would be no issue to, yeah, get a new license with it.
Thank you. And Kay, I guess I would point you to the maintenance section, item 35 and 36 on packet page 186, address the trash, and there are rules around them to be...
But were those rules in place before as well? I thought they were, no?
This is our first, this is new, so that these are setting out what the requirements are, so...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Sure.
Sorry, I'm getting a bit in the weeds here, but consider parklet and private property in a, in a shared lot like flagships, for instance. When a new project is proposed that shares that parking lot, there's a parking analysis performed. Do the spots that are covered by a parklet count as existing parking, I assume, in the analysis?
So we haven't had to do that yet, but I, I'm just thinking about it now. If we had, just to make it easy, say we had approved an X amount of parking spaces as a parklet and then a new business share, in that shared lot came in, I don't think we would look to count those as available because they're kind of occupied through this license agreement that gives the right to parking to the outdoor dining use. But at the same time, we would be flexible in how we approach parking to begin with and we would take in the overall parking demands of that shopping center or all commercial suites in that, that, with the access to the shared parking in determining the size of the allowable parklet. So we would try to do that analysis before the parklet's granted, but to your point, a more intense use could propose to occupy, but from the staff perspective, we would not want to ding them. So we would try to come up with a way that's flexible and it may result in a need to come before the planning commission or even the city council for some type of discretionary action to address that.
Yeah, I guess, I also don't want to ding those future more intense uses because somebody else put a parklet in earlier, so, so to my thinking, we're, you know, maybe the, maybe the current parking is actually exactly what the code requires as a minimum and we're still allowing some of those to go to parklet and I'm all for that. I don't want that, them to come back and bite us when a future use comes along. So I would, I mean, this is perhaps too in the weeds, but you know, it feels to me like treating those as parking because they are in the long run parking with a temporary structure on them would be the way to go. Okay. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. And I will open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item can step forward. Anyone? Kevin?
I still know Zoom attendees, Mayor Harvey.
Okay. Then I will bring it back to the council. And yes, Laura?
Thank you. I, I just have a comment. I, I would like to see us change the, change, I know that only the, the fee part is really what you need approval on, but I, I would love it to see it changed to the slanted parking spots. You can do up to three spots on a case-by-case basis because it just seems like, I can't envision any way to get two to work in isolation, so it's almost just saying you can't do it on slanted parking spots. So I, I would like to see that i- if it's, if it's perpendicular, straight-in parking, then two sounds good to me, but if they're slanted, it feels like it has to be three if we want people to actually be able to do it. I don't know how the other council members feel about that.
Yes.
I, I think two would be perfectly workable. There's actually more area in two slanted parking spaces than in two perpendicular ones. You get, actually you get more space, they're longer. And I, I have seen lots of single space examples of parklets. Previously, they weren't all about dining, right? Parklets when they first came along were little parks, that's the name. But since we're talking mostly about dining, I'm, I'm comfortable with two. I wouldn't want to go to three blanket, but I would be willing to go to, you know, and I would support three as a, up to a maximum, half the streetfront, street frontage or something like that. I don't want to take out all the parking in front of all of the businesses downtown.
And you have the discretion to do that, given the code that's out there, correct?
Yeah. As, as Associate Planner Buss mentioned, this is an administrative process, so we do appreciate the council direction and flexibility and helping us to finalize it, but it gives us flexibility.
And, and I agree with you. It's kind of that balance between allowing them to happen, great to have outdoor dining, but also not taking away all of the parking such that the rest of the businesses don't get the benefit of that, so...
Yeah. I just, I mean, I have not actually counted these spaces, like along Old Redwood Highway, but I'm just, I'm envisioning this, the doubled up you were talking about, right? Like if, like I'm thinking of like the Tiny Thai Place, right? If, if they get two and then Redwood Cafe gets two and then, you know, like in the, you know, that if there's six altogether, how many are going to be left? Right?
Right. And there's also already some missing because of Cafe Salsa, because there aren't parking spaces there because that's bulged out, but that's been that way for a very long time. So, okay. With that, any other concerns? We've already opened this up to public comments, so what would the pleasure of the council be? Would we like to adopt this resolution?
I'd be happy to move the resolution establishing the public parklet space rental fee and adding it to the city's fee schedule.
All second? All right. Motion is second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions? All right. That passes unanimously and then we will move on. The next item is letter of opposition to propose Senate Bill 423. And Damian, is this you?
Yes, that's me. Thank you. All right. So in 2017, the legislature passed and the governor signed SB 35. And this allows for the ministerial approval of multifamily developments without any city council or public input. And the, the only thing that, that's, for those kind of developments that's allowed and ministerially approved project is application of objective design standards, which can be locally adopted. And, and so in practice, you know, what ends up, I think what ends up happening often is, is there's been a multitude of housing laws, as the council well knows, and so a lot of these council law, these, I'm sorry, these city or state laws can be additive, so they can be, you know, used together, which ends up further limiting even the application of objective design standards in some cases. So it also, I should also say that it also, because it's ministerial, it's, it's not required to be analyzed under SEQA, which is another place where public input would normally be taken, which is also removed. So at the end, end of the day, it just preempts the city's discretionary land use authority. And in certain standards, or certain circumstances, I'm sorry, can also waive or, or waive one or more locally adopted objectives, that design standards, bypass environmental review and eliminate public input. So SB 423 is a proposed bill in the legislature right now. It's, it just passed out of the Senate Housing Committee and it's moving to the Senate Governance and Finance Committee on April 26th. And SB 423 is an amendment put forth by Senator Weiner, who was the, I think, the primary author for SB 35. SB 423 removes the sunset in SB 35. SB 35 has a 2026 sunset, that would go away under SB 423. It also applies, and this is a bit nebulous still to me, but applies SB 35 provisions to cities that have not been found in substantial compliance with housing element law by HCD. It expands SB 35 to developments in the coastal zone. It allows the state to approve housing developments on property they own or lease without being required to follow local zoning and development standards and has a prohibition on inclusionary housing if, enforcement of a local inclusionary housing ordinance if the income limits are higher than those in SB 35. So attached is a, is a letter that has been put forward by CalCities, who's requesting support for their efforts with the state legislature to, to either defeat SB 423 or hopefully significantly modify it into something that is more workable for cities. And let's leave it at that and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yes, Kay?
The, so it's interesting that you said it was a little nebulous because this was the part that stood out for me was this not being found in substantial compliance and I would actually be in support of a bill that causes cities that are in substantial non-compliance to have to comply, right? So is it defined anywhere, what that is, or would that be the modification that CalCities is asking for?
The, the way SB 35 worked and I think the way these changes are implemented, if you had, if a city had fully complied, met its, not, not just planned for the units, but actually delivered the units, it was exempt from SB 35. I think that's still the intent. I read the language too, I found it, I found it a little murky, so I'm, I'm not certain, but I, but I've understood from everyone else that I've talked to that that's, that's what it's intended to do. So for example, in the last cycle, Beverly Hills only had a renault obligation of four units, which they satisfied, so they weren't subject to SB 35. So we all heard about that. Why is Beverly Hills not subject to SB 35 when they've got... Why is Beverly Hills not subject to SB 35 when they've got bigger problems than anyone else? Well, they had made some kind of deal in the housing element law cycle the last time. I believe that's how it's still set up, but again, I'm not entirely certain.
Yeah, I dug through the whole thing, and I could find no definition in any of these pages of what substantial compliance means, and without, without that, it's really very nebulous. The, the other part that it was more disturbing to me is it goes on in the section well beyond just providing sites for your numbers, but it says you have to have issued the building permits, or you're subject to this. Well, that puts us in, in the place of building houses, because we can entitle projects, which Kattati Stations is a good example of that, as is the Wananis-Kattati. That doesn't mean that those developers ever have to pull those permits and build those, but this is saying that if you don't issue the building permits, then you're subject to this, and that's just feels way beyond the whole rena process of finding sites and moving towards it. That was what I found disturbing in here, is that, that's a big leap, to go from finding sites and laying things out to actually issuing the permits. And the other, the other part in here that was also a little disturbing is, you know, around the, the compliance numbers, it keeps talking about the 80%. Well, if you look at our, our production numbers that we did, we didn't have a problem with the moderates. We, we overdid our moderates, but we have a hard time with the extremely low and the very low, and we didn't do horribly bad on the low, but those are the ones that we, we can't get developers to build. And none of this in here is directing those developers to build any of those, they keep talking about the 80%. So, that kind of gets them off the hook to do moderates, you know, and that's, that's not where people generally aren't meeting their numbers. Generally, they're not meeting their numbers in, in the low and very low, and what we hear a lot, and I don't know if it's true or not, but what we hear a lot, is it doesn't pencil out for them to do the costs to create those units. So, money has to come, you know, from somewhere to create those units, you know, I, I don't think it comes out of thin air, but there has to be money to build, to put into those units, to get them built, so.
So, so I, I agree with the funding being a requirement for this, but I also feel like I-
There is no funding with it.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, so I'm just, I'm giving you suggestions for the letter, right? Is that, you know, I'm not against what this is saying, I would like them to define what substantial compliance is, and then to fund these, the, the building permits, and because I do get the idea that planning for something, finding the space for something, is not a place that people can live, right? And so, but the funding is required in order to build these places that people can live, or refit current structures that are not being used, or, you know, all of these things require money, and so, I, you know, I would agree with you that we need some funding in order to back this up.
Or the developers do need money.
Either way.
Someone needs that money, yeah.
You know, the people who are going to build it, you know, however it is-
Right, however it-
Money is needed.
Yes.
Yes.
True. Yes.
Kind of a point of clarification, I'd love to jump in this discussion, but I thought we're still in, like, the questions portion, so should we take public comment and move on to discussion, so we can jump in, or?
We can do both? If you have questions or-
No, I have no questions, I just don't want to jump into just making points if that's not the part we're in.
No, I'm just clarifying what, you know, what, what's in here was, the way I read it, and did you read it differently, Noah?
Yeah, substantial compliance is a nebulous term, it's, in my experience in the recent housing element update, it generally means certified housing element by HCD. So it's beyond rena, as you're pointing out, it's all other areas of housing element law, which, as we talked about recently, are very substantial.
But do we get a, a letter saying you're not in compliance? Or, I mean-
So the, as we've talked about through this, the entire playing field for housing and being reviewed by HCD has been changing constantly over the last couple of years, but generally, HCD will start to do rena compliance for, or rena review for H, I'm sorry, rena review for SB 35 compliance annually, and I believe they're targeting June or July every year, moving forward. They did not previously do that, is my understanding, but since the law's passed and is now intended to become permanent or at least in place for several years, they have committed to doing that.
And when you say for SB 35 compliance, does that mean that if a project's presented, presented to you, you follow what SB 35 has laid out? Is that what that means?
So, so every year, HCD will review where you are with rena of each, in each of your income categories, and make a decision or determination as to whether you are subject to SB 35 in your city for each of those income categories.
So it's by category?
Correct.
By category?
Correct.
Interesting. Okay. Any other? Okay, then I will open this up for public comment. Yes, sir. You can come up to the, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
I'm actually from LA, I'm locally moved back up here. I was actually in Venice for a long time, so I've been around a lot of the building stuff. You guys run an amazing meeting, so really organized and well-informed. The SB stuff is jargon-laden, and it's really scary, to be honest. I suffered being directly involved with, like, a lot of people that are involved with SB 1197 and the Triple H, all that 3H money, and developers have gotten away with drafting way too much stuff. So, and it's really, like, in all intents of what you've just described, sounds like something that's very much scripted from a developer's end, that forces your hands into building things that are completely not acceptable for communities, or the people they're claiming they're there to serve. What's happened in LA recently is point positive, something's blaringly wrong. You have 1,800 units just go into receivership in a matter of days, because three deaths appear, something's very scary in that whole little system. So I do appreciate the way you guys are trying to investigate and, like, being more cognate about what's actually drafted there, and what the jargon means as opposed to the reactive, so. Thank you guys so much, though.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sure.
Anyone else? And we have no more Zoom attendees that I can see?
Correct.
Okay, I'll bring it back. Laura, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you very much. I, we, we had a visitor from Generation Housing, when this was on consent calendar last meeting, who made a suggestion that I thought was a good idea, that we, I'm, just full disclosure, I'm not completely opposed to everything in SB 35. I think that for, for communities that are being bad actors and trying to oppose housing in their areas, it can be really useful. So I would prefer that instead of just saying or sending a notice of opposition, that we put in the title line, as was suggested, oppose unless amended, and then really state the things that we would like to see changed. Mayor Harvey, I could not agree more with you about the biggest problem in this legislation, which is it does nothing to force developers to build the very low-income housing. And so I would love to see us in this letter add a line where we call out that if a jurisdiction is subject to SB 35 solely because it hasn't built very low-income housing, then developers who want to use SB 35 as a vehicle to do their projects have to build a substantial amount of very low-income housing, because otherwise, we're not meeting our very low housing goal, and then a developer can come in and build a project that doesn't include any very low housing, or not enough of it to address the needs that we have. So I would like to see that listed out, as we oppose that. And then the other issue that I see is that there's just so much vagueness about what concessions and exemptions developers get automatically, and it's, takes a lot of staff time to wade through that, and it's, it's unclear, so I'd like just to put in the letter that we want to see that clarified. And I think if those two things were in place, I could see myself supporting SB 423, but, but I'd like to see us just list those two things out. And then the last change I would like to see is, at the very end of the letter, there's a line that says, "California will never produce the number of homes needed within increasingly state-driven by right housing approval process." I don't necessarily agree that that's true, I mean, I could envision a horrible state-driven by right housing approval process that results in a lot of housing getting built. So, I, I, that, that line just seems disingenuous, not disingenuous, but it just seems inaccurate, that, that really our issue with the bill isn't that it's not going to produce enough housing, it's, it's that it totally discounts any other concerns that a community might have about where, where that housing goes and other aspects of it. So, I would just like to take that, that line out, because I think it weakens the punch of the, of the rest of the letter, because it doesn't ring so true to me. So those, those are my three comments, thank you.
And I'm glad that you brought up the project in Sebastopol, because I was interested in it, because it was, it was brought up by Calum. And if we could only be so lucky as to get a project like that one. It was a fine project, it was on three acres, it was stepped up, it had a ton of amenities, it followed all of the guidelines, it had a lot of low and very low, and, you know, the proper, you know, green spaces and things like, I mean, that's not, that's not what we're getting, so that is an example, the one that, that he told us about is an example of what I would say is a good, is a good project. But unfortunately, that, that's not what's been given to us. So, thoughts on those comments by Vice Mayor?
I, I agree with Vice Mayor Sparks that, that, I think the state obviously needs to have some kind of club to hold over the head of cities that are bad actors and are not interested in producing housing, and are trying to become, you know, mountain lion habitat for the whole city, or whatever. So, my problem with SB 35 and thus 423 is that there's no way to, even if you're a good actor, and you miss your target by a few, you're subject to very similar, I mean, there, there are a few steps in SB 35, you know, sort of what you're subject to, but it's, it's very difficult to get out of the hole once you're, you know, you've been doing your darndest to meet your targets, and you're subject to the same really crude tool of saying, "Yeah, sorry, city, you've been doing your darndest, but it's out of your hands now, developers get to build whatever they want." So I think the, the consequence doesn't, doesn't, isn't calibrated to, to, you know, our lack of production of housing. So I would, if we wanted to write in here some amendments that we could support, they would, sort of along the lines that Vice Mayor Sparks said, they would, they would have to say, you know, if a bill that, that mandates, you know, if, for, say in our case, where very low is the only category where we underproduced in the last cycle, that said, you know, I would, I would say a pretty high percentage, you know, a project that comes in with 50% in, in the categories that were underproduced, would be subject to some ministerial level, whatever. I could support that, I, I can't imagine the author modifying it to that extent, but I could support that. I, I agree that the waiver process is really problematic right now, too, that you waived the height requirement, so a 100-story tower in downtown Kattati is okay? That's not going to fly. Okay, thanks.
Same with the density bonus. It, it, the density bonuses apply after the units, so all they have to do is say that they're going to do 50% of the units, and then they get to add on density bonus units, and those can be market rate. So there are things. So Damian, do you have?
So, yeah, I mean, there's been some ideas out there, I just, I guess just some council consensus on what we want to actually put in the letter, and then I would just suggest that you delegate it to, to staff to redraft it, and for the mayor's signature.
So are we all okay with the oppose unless amended concept? That seems, you know, okay. And then the next one was the, the categories, right, Laura?
And I think Councilmember Ford had a similar idea, I'd be okay with however the wording wanted to be done.
And then you wanted that one sentence stricken? Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Is that helpful?
Well, I think, I, I think I want to make sure that we understand what the approach is on the income units. What I heard was if, if the sole reason why you're subject to SB 35, SB 243?
423.
423. I'll get it right, eventually.
That's okay.
Is because you, you, you didn't meet one of the categories, then the developer that was taking advantage of SB 35 would have to include 50% of the, of the units in the project would have to be in that income category? Is that right? And, and are we only focused on the low income? Because there are multiple categories.
Well, there's multiple low incomes, there's the extremely low, the very low, the low, and the moderate, and they keep going after the moderate category in this bill.
What is reported under the production report? Because that's what HCD uses.
It's my understanding, so right now we report very low, low, and moderate, however, 50% of our very low have to be in the extremely low category, even though it's not called out specifically in the reporting. So it's, again, we're building the airplane while we fly.
So I, I believe SB 35 only focuses on the, the income category, lower income, which is 80% and below, and the moderate income category. I think you all are just focused on the lower income category, is that correct?
I think, so what I'm understanding is, it doesn't matter which category, but the idea is, if we, if we are subject to these bills because we do not have, we're substantially below in a particular category, that the developer is required to include enough building in that category to now make us compliant? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, because in other words, right now, our, our next rena has for very low income, 60 units, and this bill is never going to get any of those done. So Ben's suggestion is, unless they want to come in and say, whatever their project is, 50% of the units will hit some of those, then we won't.
Yeah. I guess, like, we can't say one project has to satisfy all our underproduction, San Francisco's never going to let that fly.
No.
So, but, but we could say something like, and I can't draft legislation, obviously, but we could say something like, a project whose income affordability mix matches the underproduction in our current rena, you know, numbers, would be subject to ministerial approval. So if, if a, you know, site is, if a city is short 200 very low and 400 low and 300 moderate, then somebody could come in with a project that proposed in that ratio, three moderate to four low to two very low, and that would be subject to ministerial. Something tailored to, to actually meet our underproduction, rather than just say, if you don't meet in any way, then developers come, get to come build a whole lot of housing.
And they get to build it at the moderate-
Right.
And maybe some lows. They never have to build any of the very lows, and that doesn't help us.
So I'm not sure that-
But, but if we're not below by 50, then we don't need 50. I mean, the point is to have it tied, right?
Well, he's saying percentage-wise.
Right.
Yeah.
But he's saying 50%, but I'm saying-
Well, that's because that's what I said first, but, yeah. Sorry. So I guess my proposal would just be that the, that the letter say something more like, a bill that much more tightly, tightly ties projects' eligibility for ministerial review to being responsive to the jurisdiction's non, non-production of housing, or something like that. And, and we can't write this- And we can't write the specifics out of that.
To pull us into compliance.
But that's broad enough that says that, "Don't bring us a project, which is what we're getting, that's going to give us more of the moderate. That's not going to help us get into compliance."
Okay.
So, you can go ahead.
Go for it.
So I'd like to write, Councilmember Ford said that it's responsive to, the eligibility must be predicated on the development being responsive to the categories that we're short in. And we could even write in the letter, it's just a letter, telling them what we think. So we could even write in the letter, "For example, if a city only is missing very low-income housing, then the developer should be required to produce a substantial amount of very low."
And I think the ratio was key, too, right? To include that the ratio required to bring us into compliance.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing from the council is about proportionality. If you just missed by one unit, you know, that's one thing. But if you, and if you missed in the very low-income category, then the developer needs to produce higher in the very low-income category.
Right, exactly.
I think we have the concept now. We could draft something.
The other, oh, sorry, were you going to stay on that same? Go ahead. Well, the other piece was just that I think that in the amendments we would need to see to support it is a lot more clarity and restriction on the waiver process.
Yeah, that and also funding sources for lower, like extremely low or very low housing.
And a tighter definition on what is substantial compliance.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, part of what I heard was that the one-size-fits-all model isn't great. Like, you know, if you're a community trying its darndest to produce the housing and then just by this, you know, quirk of state law, the developer can come in and just, you know, do a giant project to take advantage of some small miss on a housing goal. There should be maybe some recognition of that. I mean, because if you're a community that's just like, forget the housing element, forget the state, I'm just going to, you know, stub my nose, that's a totally different situation than someone that's really trying to...
Yeah, because a lot of what was in here was talking about, and I don't know how many cities there are, but there are cities that just don't even bother to do their housing element. Says that they just don't do it. Well, that, to me, seems, you know, pretty egregious, but...
Yeah, they should get the 100-story towers.
Yeah.
Yeah. They'll approve their housing element real quick.
They're already subject to the builder's remedy if they don't have a, you know, so they have this whole other thing that they're subject to. They're also subject to SB 35.
Well, and that's, part of the problem is they're all stackable. And so then, you know, this stacks on top of this and then you have a total mess, a 100-story building.
I got the concepts, so I'll incorporate them. And like I think several of you pointed out, this is just a letter to the state. So we don't have to draft the bill language here, but just get the general concepts in the letter.
So with those changes incorporated, are we okay with moving this forward? And could we get a motion to that so that it's memorialized?
I move that we authorize the mayor to send a letter on behalf of the city opposing unless amended the proposed Senate Bill 423.
Second? Okay. Thank you for that. Then we will move on.
Do we need to vote on it?
Oh, gosh. Oh, my goodness, yes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Thanks, Ben. It's like, oh, my God, what a night this is, huh? All right, so the next thing is nominations for regional commissions on behalf of Sonoma County mayors and council members.
So Mayor? I'll just, two quick notes on this before you guys start deliberating. It's in the staff report, but April 20th is the upcoming Board of Directors meeting. So that's why we're considering this tonight. These various appointments will be considered at that Board of Directors meeting for the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association. And also, just to call your attention to the fact that there was one late add to this. So under the North Bay Division Cal City's Executive Board, one seat and one alternate. The one that's in the packet is from our mayor, but there was also an addition that was added to the packet after the original publishing date. So that should all be in front of you as well.
Okay, so you want to go through these one by one? Network for everyone? Okay, so for the A-BAG Executive Board, there's one seat and one alternate. And we've got two letters, one from Susan Adams of Broner Park for the regular seat and one from Councilmember Steve Zolman of Sebastopol for the alternate seat. So any objections to that? Okay. And then next, the North Bay Division of Cal City's Executive Board, there's one seat and one alternate. What would you guys like to do here?
I'd encourage us to support Mayor Harvey for the seat and Vice Mayor Thompson from Petaluma for the alternate.
Okay. Any objection? All right, then moving on, we have Sonoma County Agriculture, Preservation, and Open Space District Citizens Advisory Committee. We got two seats and there are two letters. Interestingly enough, they're both from Petaluma, but those were the only letters we got. So everyone okay with that? I have no idea why, you know, others didn't jump in, but, okay. And then the next is for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. There is one seat and there is one letter, and that's from Victoria Fleming. Okay with that? Okay. Airport Land Use Commission, there's one seat, but we've got no letters. So I suppose there's a possibility that we could get a nomination from the floor. So I guess one of the questions is, is do I have the latitude to vote if someone jumps in from the floor and says, "I want to do..."
Yes.
I think we trust your judgment on that.
Now, don't you all come running to do that? And then lastly is the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District. There's one seat and we got one letter from Gerard Judichay. Okay with that? All right. So then I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anybody running up, and I don't see any Zoom members.
That is correct, Mayor Harvey.
Okay, so I believe that I heard we'll accept the A-BAG letters we got on the North Bay. I will put forward myself for the seat and for Vice Mayor Cater Thompson, the alternate for the Sonoma Ag and Preservation Open District, we'll accept the two letters that were received. For MTC, we'll accept the one letter received. For Airport Land Use, we will see what we get at the meeting. And for Golden Gate Bridge and Highway Transportation, we will accept the letter from Gerard Judichay.
And Mayor, real quick, just also, in addition to the Airport Land Use Commission, the MTC, the committee could submit up to three names. That's what the county usually requests, even though there's only one application. So you could have people come in at the floor on, at the actual meeting, so...
Okay, I forgot about that.
I would just suggest that the mayor has latitude for that as well.
Are you guys okay with that?
Well, yeah, and I was going to suggest, just in general, that we give you latitude to make decisions as needed at the meeting if there are changes. You know, if somebody withdraws and somebody else throws their hat in the ring, then you're authorized to make a decision.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right. Okay, and we don't need to vote on this, right? Because it's just direction, right?
Right, just provide the mayor direction, yep.
All righty, good job, team. So now we are on to City Managers Report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So construction, there's a lot of it going on. You heard earlier tonight that the tents came down in downtown. So that went quickly on Monday. So other constructions, we have something coming up that will probably be noticed by the public. And that is at the intersection of Highway 116 and Old Redwood Highway, there was some pending changes to the striping of the turn lane. And that's going to get restriped on Mon, well, the initial work on Sunday and then Monday night is when the actual permanent stripes go down. So that's when you're on Old Redwood Highway heading towards, heading west, like towards Highway 101. Currently, there's three lanes in that direction. There is a dedicated left on the left side. The middle lane is through left and then the right lane is through right. So those, the middle lane and the left lane, the left lane will still be left and the middle lane will still be left through. But they're going to go, when the receiving lanes, when they get onto 116, are going to be dedicated through lanes. So right now, one goes into a, what becomes a turn lane, onto southbound US 101. And so there's a lot of weaving of cars to get out of that lane because they don't want to be in that lane. Or cars stack up in the middle because they don't want to deal with the weaving. So the striping change will be to place them both in through lanes. So if somebody wants to go on US 101 South, they just have to change lanes to the left. And hopefully, it'll reduce the amount of weaving and craziness that happens in that really pretty short stretch of road.
Is it going to be painted to say 101 only or through only kind of thing? Or is it just, you just have to figure it out? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, there'll be legends, so thank you. All right, so also the Civic Center Window Replacement Project. You might have seen the new windows. Much nicer than the assortment of glass and plexiglass and broken, like, yeah. So what's left over there is to, the last item, aside from just some minor stuff related to the windows, is repairing water damage. To the dance studio, which is the Eagle Room at the very end. It's the farthest west, closest to the ball field, which is expected to get underway next week and should be move-in ready by the end of May. So that will, all the inside work will be done. And that will be as of tonight now, because the council approved the painting project. That'll get going next, and that's for City Hall, the Civic Center, and the Kattati Room to put a fresh coat of paint on those. And also repairing some damaged trim here and there. There's some places, especially on the back of City Hall, where there's some damaged trim that needs to be replaced. Pocket Park is done. The hardscape improvements are done. The only thing remaining is the ballered lights still need some help, as some of you know. And we're working on that. But in the meantime, while that's sort of moving along in the background, we have two days scheduled for volunteers to help with planting and mulching. And the first is on April 22nd. That'll be, these will be coming out on social media here soon. But 9:00 AM to noon, we're asking for volunteers to help plant. And then on April 29th, we need folks to help spread mulch. And this will include butterfly and bee-friendly plants, including milkweed. Now, that's been a conversation at the council before, so that's all part of that. And anyway, that's moving forward. So on the topic of parks, Kattati Park is moving quickly now that the rain has stopped. The concrete's been poured, a lot of the curbs have been poured for the playground areas and the picnic areas. And if you've been out there recently, like today, there's playground equipment laying all over the place out there, still in wrappers. So they're going to be installing that here very soon. I think they're looking to firm up the schedule with the playground vendor. But we're hopefully starting that next week. And the restroom is scheduled to be delivered at the end of June. So we'll see the playground equipment go in, all the remaining landscape and other improvements happen sometime in May. And then the restroom will just come in at the end of June. It'll be like the last thing that happens.
Question, was it their adult fitness equipment that was part of this one, too? Is that coming in in May as well?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So it's all, yeah, there'll be an outdoor gym there, too, if you want to. So kid stuff and all the way to adults. Okay, so roadwork, we have this La Plaza in West Sierra is going to get going soon. And we expect that, with warm weather now, we're going to see a lot of roadwork starting up. And we are looking at the, I think the curb ramps and things are probably going to start next week. So some of the preliminary work, and then in May, and then into June, that street work will happen. So that will be a huge improvement, especially in parts of La Plaza behind the bandstand, which that road is complete garbage. So it'll be nice to finally get that done. Businesses and residents along these routes have been notified and receive, and we have project updates on our website, of course. And also police, fire, garbage, sweep sweepers, transit, so forth have also been notified. And that's true for this other project, too, which is the, what we call a 2023 street reconstruction, but that's primarily Myrtle. And if you've been over there recently, along Myrtle and some of those streets to the south of Myrtle, primarily, there's been potholing and a bunch of preliminary work. They're doing curb ramps now. And that's going to be, that one's going to be a little more exciting because that project is the full-depth reclamation type work. So it's going to be a dirt road for a bit until they come back in and repave it. Yeah, this one's going to be, this is milling grind out here and just repaving, so it's not going to be quite as dramatic looking. But anyway, both of those are going to get going here and they're going to be probably in full swing during May. And just a couple of things on community development. You already know about the housing element and the park that we talked about tonight, but we're going to be having a workshop on REACH, your all-electric code, here very shortly. So expect to see that here at council for some council and community feedback on which direction we want to go with that and where we are right now with the current building code. It's on the 25th. Oh, so you just came out with it. I wasn't going to lock him into it, but there you go. It's out in public now. The 25th, we're going to be here for a workshop. And then just from quick recreation updates, we had on April 1st, Saturday, it was a Saturday, we held our annual bunny brunch and egg hunt, and it was a huge success. We had over 160 participants for brunch and photos with the bunny and, of course, the egg hunt. And I think they found all the eggs. I don't think any of them fell into gopher holes and disappeared. But that was great. It was perfect weather. This past Friday, we delivered our bunny grams throughout Kattati. I know some of you got those, so hopefully those were nice and everyone enjoyed them. It was a basket with stuffed eggs and stuffed animal and other goodies. So looking forward, on April 22nd, we have our first-ever Sweet Spring Festival at the Veranda Flitty Ranch, hosted by our partners, Sandy Loam. And this will be 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's open to all. We'll have activities to come celebrate all things spring, crafts, games, animals, music, dancing, treats, and plant flower seeds to take home. And it's, even though it is free, we highly encourage registration so we know how many people we expect to show up for materials and things. On April 28th, we're hosting our April Kids Night Out event from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. This is where your child can hang out with our camp staff and play games, make crafts, have pizza dinner, watch a movie while you spend a few hours with yourself or with your loved ones and on a date night errands or just some kid-free time to relax at home. Then on the 30th of April, the Kattati Historical Society is bringing back the annual Good Old Fashioned Chicken Barbecue for the first time since 2019. So that's kind of a, I don't know, it's a milestone that they're back. It's from noon to 4:00. It's a barbecue meal, live music, car show, and bake sale. And tickets can be purchased at the Exchange Bank here in Kattati, the Chamber of Commerce, the Historical Society, or by calling them. And then we have many other things coming up this spring, including the Community Campout at the ranch, the Community Yard Sale, Farmsters Water Conservation and Rainwater Capture Workshop, and many, many more things. And so I don't list them all out for you and not bore you guys to death, I'll stop there because we can talk about it as the future meetings get closer.
Questions? All right, thank you for that. Will, when they restripe those lanes, will they be putting out some signage that says "Changes Ahead" so that people will know that there are changes?
We've been talking about it. Yeah, the flags, "Change Conditions Ahead," that sort of thing. As well as social media, I mean, we're going to be putting in social media.
Just for drive, yeah.
Yeah, it's helpful.
They seem to get, you know...
It's actually kind of horrifying how autopilot people get on their driving. Like in the past, in those years past, where you put a new, like, median in the island, people just drive right over the thing because they don't realize that there's something changed in the roadway. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, then we will move on to city council member reports. Kay, do you have anything?
Yeah, so April 12th is the Library Commission, and we are still looking for someone from Catati to represent us, the person who was on it before. Oh, I'm sorry?
I would like to.
Lovely. I would love to speak with you. Our last one was from Pen Grove, so it'd be really nice if we had someone who actually lives in Catati. Although we appreciate the person from Pen Grove.
And there's an application on the website.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
So there is an application on the website. So April 18th is the Education Commission meeting. And I just want to make a slight announcement. April 19th will be the Coffee with Kay at 6:00 PM at Redwood Cafe because I am actually going to be speaking at a teacher conference the following week, so I won't be able to have it the night I normally do. And then I, I was also going to mention the Catati Historical Society barbecue. All of your council member will be there serving chicken. So we hope that you will join us. And I do have a booklet of 10 tickets if anybody needs them as well.
Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. I attended the Water Advisory Committee meeting last, a week ago, yesterday, so last Monday. Just a couple, oh, we approved the budget. Well, that was what happened at the meeting. It was a big thing.
Yay.
Santa Rosa voted no. Most folks voted yes, so it still passed based on the weighted average, the way the votes work there, but that was interesting. But we did approve the budget. And then there were some interesting updates about the Potter Valley Project. There's a group that is rapidly forming called the Russian River Water Forum, which is going to be a group comprised of 26 members in their planning group of technical staff from the relevant basins. It's going to include three seats and three alternates from the WAC-TAC. And it will be looking at the future of the Potter Valley Project. And it just seems to be moving pretty quick, so I'm going to provide updates on next, you know, what is going on with that. Because right now, it's looking as though PG&E is not going to continue operating the powerhouse. And we haven't heard anything yet about whether they're, what they're going to do. So there's a lot of uncertainty about the future of the Potter Valley Project. I will keep you all posted. One other interesting thing was that the, as of the meeting, the reservoir at Lake Sonoma was about 6,000 acre feet above what the Army Corps of Engineers wants to see. So they were actually releasing water pretty quickly. And we're working, the, there are people working right now on trying to get a major deviation for Lake Sonoma so that they can hold more water in the, in the reservoir than what's currently allowed. And I learned that some of the regulations that the Army Corps of Engineers follows in their dam management handbook was written in the 60s when we didn't have good water forecasting tools, or weather forecasting tools. So they're very conservative about keeping a lot of, a lot of capacity unused in the dam. So I'm hoping that sometime in the next near future, that will be changing and we'll be able to actually store more water. But those are my updates. Thank you.
Sylvia?
Yes, so I attended the WAC meeting along with Vice Mayor Sparks. And also yesterday, we went on a water tour. We were invited to attend, so Vice Mayor Sparks, myself and Council Member Emily Sanborn from Brunner Park also attended. So we went to visit the caissons, the wells, one through six over on Waller Bridge. And we also went to see the, the ponds they have over by Mirabelle. You know, they have the ponds right over in that area. And we also got to climb the Catati Water Towers that are right over here. And we walked up at the top. It's kind of really interesting and fun, a little bouncy, but we saw, we learned a lot about the aging infrastructure and just a lot of different resources. The Water Education Center is amazing. They have programs for young people there, so a lot of, a lot of the schools. I think they said they work with the Thomas Page, I think, students to teach them about, with the water education program. So, and it was a good day yesterday, so I appreciate that.
Kay?
Brief updates from the Sonoma Clean Power Board. I, I got to brag about Catati's growing fleet of police patrol vehicles and overall electrification of our fleet and a lot of other cities said, oh, we want that. And so I sort of volunteered the chief to like show off our electric patrol vehicles that people want to come see them, so. On another note, that I don't think it's gotten enough notice that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District very recently passed measures that will make it illegal to install gas water heaters in our county starting in 2027 and gas furn- residential furnaces starting in 2029, commercial water heaters in 2031. So building electrification is coming pretty quick here. It's going to have a big impact. Well, it's going to require a lot from PG&E and from Sonoma Clean Power as that all ramps up. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Last week, I read at Thomas Page Academy, they had a STEAM event for all of their students, and I walked around and saw their projects. It was pretty cool, all the different science projects that all of them did. So I read to the students, actually after I read, Officer Ranky also read to the students and a couple of the members of Rancho Adobe Fire Department also read to the students. So that was fun. I attended the Sonoma Marin Mosquito Vector Control Meeting. That was pretty quick. I attended a LAFCO meeting this week. It was a very interesting meeting. There was over, well over 50 firemen there in support of the, one of the consolidations. So North Bay Fire is now taking over a lot of the volunteer fire departments under their wing, and they're contracting with Gold Ridge Fire Department for administration and leadership. So it's part of that puzzle as the fire departments start their consolidation. But this was a really big one, and North Bay Fire has been actually doing this for the last three years. So now they will get the recognition and they will get the money from the county, so that will make them whole. And then yesterday, I attended the SCTA meeting, and there's nothing of significance to report other than I mentioned the e-bike stuff again. And they said that they're, they're working on that. The thing that people need to know about that is that it's a difficult industry right now, that the, that the industry itself, the models that they're using aren't working. So the reason that they're not getting as many takers on that is the industry is trying to right now re, you know, reformulize itself. But they're going to keep moving forward on that. So we would run into the same struggles because I guess, I guess a lot of the ones that were doing it just have not been able to, to keep their model, their model going. But, but they're confident that something will transpire there. So that was important to note that I brought that up.
Did they have any idea on the timeline?
They're, they're going to keep pushing it like, like this month. They're going to keep pushing it, but right now, they just haven't been able to find a vendor that's, that's viable. And they really do want to do not only the bikes, but also scooters. So they're trying to find a vendor that, that can, that can support it, so more to come on that, but.
And Mayor, as I recall, the SCTA and TAM, which is the transportation agency in Marin, they're, they're jointly issuing an RFP, right, shortly on that to try to look for vendors?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that's in terms of timing.
Yeah. So, and they want to get it out by the end of the month, but, you know, they've been really trying to, to shake that tree and are having, you know, issues with getting vendors, so.
All right, then that's all I have to report. And the next item is public comment on non-action agenda items. Yes, please.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Teresa Eaton, Catati resident, probably 30 years. Two things. First of all, I'd like to know if the city of Catati has any open land that can be used for housing for the homeless. We are so negligent to our homeless people. With more and more people being displaced, with jobs losing, these people have nowhere to go. They don't have the money to spend vast amounts of money for a stupid little studio, let alone a house. So I'm asking the city, if you don't have anything, can you get in touch with the people that are running the la- the landing? And see if they can come over and get a few of these people to get into their property so they can begin to get on their feet. It's a shame that this city has nothing for these homeless people. Secondly, I want to bring up something that happened a couple of years ago when I was, I tripped on the hump on Charles Street in the dark because it matches the pavement and fell and broke my pelvis in three places. It cost my insurance company over $70,000 and five months of rehab. Not more than a month ago, another lady was walking down Charles Street, it was nighttime, and stepped off the curb to get into her car. She tripped on it and fell face forward herself. Luckily, she didn't fall on her back, which had just been re- realigned or something in a, a surgery. That hump was done in 2020. My accident happened in 2021. When I sent a letter to the Public Works Department, the night I got home, there were two signs up and paint splashed on the pavement. Either that hump has to be better smoothed out because on the south side of Charles Street is where the apartments are and parking. There's no parking on the north side because there's no sidewalk. And the city, in my opinion, has been negligent because of that, and they haven't done anything about it. I never heard a word from the city. Sorry it happened. You know, nothing. This other lady, I don't know if she reported it, I asked her to report it because the city needs to know that this is a dangerous situation. A lot of the people who live in my mobile home, uh, my apartment, I moved to Mobile Home Park, are disabled or sort of weak on their feet. And if they don't see that hump, they're going to go right down on their face and maybe worse. So those are my two things, just out there for you to listen to, think about, and maybe act upon it, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Damian, can you look into that Charles Street issue, please?
Um, yeah, it sounds like a speed bump, like someone tripped on the speed bump, right? I'm not totally clear on what, I mean, the speed bump, yeah, I can look into it. I'm not totally clear on what the issue is, but I'll have to look into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure that Teresa's available if, if you need more, more information. Maybe she can leave her number with Damian so that...
Yeah, the meeting's almost over. Actually, if you wait a minute, I'll give you contact info.
Appreciate that. And we are always looking for opportunities to work with Brunner Park. We'll have to see what we can do about that. All right. So that leaves us at, information received after the agenda was posted, we did get that one letter from Pedaluma, and that is all I am aware of.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So then with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:23. Thank you, everyone.